And with the caveat that we have about three people, technically I guess we have a four. One person is new. That's okay. And as a result of that, only two of us were at the last meeting, so therefore we'll skip the minutes until the next meeting, when we can efficiently do that. I think in a sequence of things that I've gotten wind of over the last few days, we're gonna let mountain minerals start first. Those guys have been set up to come in for a while. Joe, I think you were a little bit later coming in and having this, so who know that route? Tom, you wanna...
Basically, you know, basically we're coming back because we have our D E P approval. We have a bond in place with the D E P. I think we've provided you the information on the bond, the property tax, you know, the registration bond with the D E P. D E P has a very structured set of regulations for the bonding, so I think that's quite well under control. It's, I believe, if it gets to be between forty-five days of when the bond runs out, they pull the bond. So that bond will have to be renewed each year by the operator, that someone there who's no chance that the bond is gonna be lost, so it protected that way. I don't remember all the conditions in particular, they're not on the plan, but we did put all the conditions we were aware of on the plan. Ken has seen them, I don't know of any additions. We did have some discussion about public sales at the pit.
We did, so we're... Yeah.
I didn't have a chance to hear.
We're letting Cody come in and get some more discussion.
Oh, thank you.
I don't think the whole stat just...
Okay.
Those are the conditions you're going to be putting up for the...
Um, it's, uh, we got out of there on one, and then the thing is that, um, I think we got, um, I think we... I don't know. We got to go to the law.
Thank you.
So we got open up the files and...
Oh, thank you. Oh, you're on.
So Ken, we should distribute things, because he isn't here.
Okay. All right, thanks. Very good. Sorry about that, Joe. But you will not be here?
This is the second.
Yeah, I think I have those right here.
I'm gonna have them for it.
Okay. Sorry, I don't know, that's fine. Uh, you were saying discussion about public sales.
The intent of, quickly, is that they will not be open to public sales. In other words, if somebody drives in the gate, there will not necessarily be somebody there to service them. If one of the towns, or somebody like Janest, wants the material, they'll contact the pit operator, and they'll make accommodations for those people to come in and buy materials from there. But it's not gonna be an open retail, like somebody, uh, somebody sitting there in the lot waiting to load a truck coming in. But just kinda wanted to clear that up, I think there was some questions.
And that was cleared with Ken, when you were just...
We just, we just spoke with him.
We did, okay.
From the meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Because I know when he got on me with an email and was discussing that, okay, and Bob and I discussed it with him when we came in tonight, okay, the intent, so like if the town wants the material, have you hold with the operators, and the operators make sure there's somebody there that can take care of that. But somebody won't just be driving it off the street to get load of it, because won't be anybody there to do it necessarily. He also discussed the fuel truck, and he came up to me, and certainly have that fuel truck full, they were trying to empty it, they haven't operated that much, it wasn't empty. However, yesterday, they had it towed from the site, it was not registered, so they could have gotten it on the road, but it is gone, there's no law on the site. And they will be fueling with an outside fuel source, so commit an extra fuel on that fuel pad that we talked about.
Mm-hmm. One of the things that I had remembered was the idea of putting up that additional sign on one oh nine coming from the Acton side. I have been not, I have not been down there to note whether that is theirs or not.
I did put it back down. Yours were on the original plan, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that was the case.
Gotcha. So can you say for the refueling, so a truck will come in like on the day that it is to be, that you need...
Well, they need your truck.
The truck is not kept on the site?
Correct. The truck will be a fuel truck, somebody, a regular delivery truck from somebody that has a fuel business here in town. I wouldn't say here in town, but in the area.
And what is the refueling pad?
What we do is, you can have a pad that actually collapses, the truck drives onto it, whatever you're refueling drives onto it, the sides fold up, you refuel if you have a spill, it spits into that pad, okay, so you can collect it, it doesn't go into the ground. The thing that's better about that than having the permanent one, if you have a permanent refueling thing, what happens is when it rains, that fills up with rainwater, it mixes with whatever fuel was spilled on it, so now they actually make, I think I gave a spec number on the plans of a fueling pad where you can drive on it, and then it's a polyester plastic thing, and the sides fold up, so if there's a spill, it's contained on there.
Okay.
It's pretty standard for rapid operation.
And can you go over the bond again, so like, in terms of, like, if it was a small operation, the town would have a bond that was protected?
Yeah, if it wasn't, if it wasn't D E P, what happened to us with this is D E P's laws saying you can operate up to ten acres, okay, have ten acres open. These fellows wanted more acreage open, because of the way that pit operates. To do that, we have to get a variance from the D E P, which we sent you a copy of, and either requirements of that variance are that they place a bond with the state to take care of the reclamation of how many acres they're gonna have open, in this case thirty, at thirty-five hundred dollars an acre, so they've put up a hundred and five thousand dollar bond, so if you ever happen, say, quickly, went down the tubes, went off out of town, you would have the pit here unreclaimed, the state now has a hundred and five thousand dollars to reclaim it.
And does the town have any say in that process? Like if that stalls out, or if that's not happening, or...
I think if you take a look at those regulations I gave you from the D E P, they're pretty stringent, they pretty much say this is exactly what happens.
Is that, this...
I believe so, and a couple times ago I had a copy of that part.
I remember Ken saying that they're stricter than the town, so...
Yeah, we do a lot with bonding, with different programs or subdivisions and things like that, and this is the best, the most stringent set of regulations I've seen for bond.
And this is something about, about, about the bond.
Okay.
That bond was actually in place when they got the, when they got the permit, that had to be a place for the center.
Any other questions?
I guess, I guess the other, um, condition, in terms of the conditional, um, conditions on it, like the Knox box?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been installed on the gate? They talked about, you know, having a get, uh, the Knox box from the gate to the fire.
Oh, that's been there.
It's been there, it's on there?
Yeah, that was from the original, uh, home of the private, yeah, on the, yeah. And we put, put a new key in it and gave it to the fire department.
Great. Yeah.
We had a quick discussion, Ken, about that sales.
Yeah.
And what we were anticipating, that it wouldn't be a drive it as you'd say.
So you can sell to the public, kind of buying an appointment only thing, and not walking off the street, is how we're thinking that terminology was?
Yeah, our plans is not to advertise selling to anybody. If the town needs some product, well, if we have some product that we can't use, like tailings, we might try to sell that, but that's really it. Our goal is to supply ourselves.
Talked about the fact that the sign has been installed back in.
Yeah.
Which you probably seen on your way home. Any other questions?
That being said, is there a motion? Is anybody in motion?
No, no motion with the, uh, these, uh, conditions, except for the...
We've got, we just have some...
Bring it down.
Yeah, I think we're just down to the, there was a couple of changes on the original plan, so I think we're, uh, some consultances updated and all that.
The fuel truck is...
Yeah, yeah, they just updated overnight, so... All right, is there a second to that? Comments on the motion?
Motion was what, I just want to...
Um, to accept the plan with the conditions as stated here?
To accept or approve?
We can't approve.
I don't know.
I guess we can approve. If you're okay with it, please, I'm sure.
Sure.
All right, all in favor? I'm all in, just three oh. All right, so you guys are good?
Good. Ken, what I'll do is I can take it as my last, my last, and then give it a call.
Awesome.
So that I'll send this over, they have a better fuel truck.
No, that's down here. The original, there were no plans from the last time?
Yeah, I was, uh, spectrum, yeah.
Oh, for your other project?
Yeah.
Oh, fuck.
I'm glad your sign just, that was, that was on the side.
There you go.
All right. Thanks, Tom, thank you all. Okay, Joe, I guess you're on.
That's out.
And now we're switching back to the town, we need to make some bond subdivision.
I put this up like that, I was staying over here and talking, but we'll talk a little bit later. Um, hey, uh, this is, um, project everybody's heard of, well, most of us. Um, this is an amazing farm, um, nine lot cluster subdivision with additional ten lot. Um, this is the same plan as the last one you signed, probably a month ago, with the exception that I've made some modifications to the building areas. I mean, in these cluster subdivisions, there's no set setbacks, other than the twenty-foot combined setback on the side, um, so we're required to add these building areas to kind of dictate where people can and can't build, and I've modified them for two reasons, um, one of which, uh, we realized when we got up there, we started trying to come up with some ideas on the lots and builds, looking to start to do some grading, um, may not have made a few of them as large as I should have, to be able to actually fit a home within the attached garage, um, this side of it, um, you know, lots like three through six are fairly similar in size, maybe a little bit bigger, but I've, I've squared all the envelopes up to the road, and added dimensions from the sides of the road, and in some cases, uh, some other additional dimensions to make it much easier for, for any potential buyers, or, um, you know, anybody who's doing any earthwork out here, or even Ken, if he's trying to do a quick inspection, my last set of envelopes was sort of staggered and without dimensioning, so once we started taking a good look at it, it would make a little more sense to do it this way, so everybody could get a much better idea of where these envelopes were on the face of the earth, without us having to go show up at the site three times a week to show people where these envelopes were. I, I believe at the end of these, Ken still gonna require some sort of certification from us, that, that constructed buildings are, are within these envelopes, but, and they're also still subject to all the standard lot, lot coverage rules and things like that, but this slightly larger areas, they allow a little bit more freedom on, on an already pretty small lot, to try to, try to let people make intelligent decisions about where these houses are gonna go from.
So, so Joe, even though the, the building envelopes are squared off, doesn't necessarily say that the houses themselves will be squared off?
No, no, and, you know, my last set, I, the, the older version of it, um, I had sort of squared everything up with the sidelines, um, which made sense to me at the time, that was when I was going through that list of twenty, twenty-five things I had to do from subdivision, regional planning to do, and this was something that I did pretty quickly, and maybe I should've spent a little bit more time on when I was, when I was putting together before, but, um, you know, this is, this is what we came up with, and, you know, welcome, welcome your input on, on those areas, so... So what I would do is people would be confined to building their homes within the blue areas, within the blue, um, you know, anything in the light green there is, is, is areas that you can clear, and whatnot, and everything in the darker green is, is stuff that's, you know, in those buffer strips, which we had determined were gonna be dealt with by the, by the points that they have, for tree removal.
Change in the envelopes, Ken, is that what you're doing?
Uh, just, uh, vegetated maximum.
Yep.
Um, that's around six to eight thousand square feet is what they'd be allowed. On two, um, three, four, five, and six are all a hundred feet deep, the building envelope, and two is one sixty. Was that just the soils more bored in the front? Um, yeah, I mean, you had that, that big area that's, you know, adjacent to the red shaded area there, but it does cross the corner of a lot, I guess, I guess I was concerned, um, that if you built right up that post, they, you know, they started grading, the lot started looking at it, they might have some water issues they'd have to deal with there, but, you know, so I had written, I had slid it back, you know, and I'd taken a hundred foot block and slid it to the back, um, kind of surrounding where you see the thirty-three thousand nine hundred square feet, and I'd taken that same sized block as all the others and moved it back there, and kind of, Billy kind of made a good point to me, he's like, well, I wouldn't want to go back there if I have to, but, because I don't want to give the expense of a longer driveway and whatnot, so he kind of asked me if, if he could get a little leeway on a bigger, bigger area there, and he wants to be as close to the road as possible, but he doesn't want to be tied to the front of it if he hits, you know, water a couple feet down near those weapons that he, that he has to deal with.
Is that the same logic for the extended lots or envelopes on seven, eight, and nine?
Yeah, seven, eight, and nine were basically the same thing, if the nicer areas to build are towards the back of those lots, you know, kind of where the number eight and nine is there, and, you know, I, I think the mindset is that you might even see a couple, three nicer homes tucked in around the back here, but maybe even on this side, um, but yes, again, I had put them in the back and it was the same thing, and Billy, Billy said, well, if you look at it, get graded, or, you know, it's, it's sort of a moderate home, a higher value home, or maybe we want to keep the driveway shorter and go towards the front. Yes, so before I had the discussion with, with Bill, I had had these, this hundred-foot size on every lot, and those were his reasons for, for asking for an extended area on those lots. But again, I think you're gonna see similar sized homes on every lot, and again, there are, um, the lot coverage requirements and whatnot that we still need to meet, but at the same time, part of the cluster is to steer, steer these homes into some sort of plan, for how they're gonna be laid out in the neighborhood.
So seven, eight, nine, the building envelope is around twenty-one thousand square feet, so it's two-thirds of the lot is the building envelope, but the most they can cover with non-vegetated areas, sixty-three hundred square feet, so it's still, um, mainly vegetated.
It's just a matter of where.
Exactly, yeah.
And, and in the town, or in, you know, among us in other subdivisions, has there ever been an issue with whether you did line homes up, or did not line homes up?
No, it was never really brought up. Uh, most of them just came in as the plan, the developer would set up how they, how they envisioned it.
Sure, sure. I mean, I, I don't have questions per se, but I would like the people who are not here tonight to be able to, um, have a shot at this too, to see if there's other questions that we're, we're missing. Do you have a problem with holding this off for another meeting?
No, I mean, I, I don't have a mylar with me tonight anyways, and, uh, yeah, the hope is obviously that, you know, if everything went great, we could get a vote, and it'd just be a matter of signatures, sort of like the last project, but I certainly understand if, you know, there's no, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible, but there's no sense of urgency with it either, and I want everybody to be comfortable, so...
Man, I, I would envision, unless you have someone that's got a decision to see it a big deal, you know, in two weeks or whatever, maybe it's three weeks into the next meeting in February, I'm not sure, but, um, at least if any of those people check in here, they could get this, take a look at it, um, and then be somewhat prepared to be able to discuss it next meeting, and, uh, and hopefully just pass it down.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing I see is lot one and two, you could probably nip the corner out a little bit where that's porous soils out there, but you're not talking very much, so I don't think it really makes a difference.
Need the two corners kind of closest to the level, you're not cutting...
Yeah, yeah. Have you triangle, cut that triangle out of there or something like that?
Yeah.
But nobody's gonna build there anyways, realistically.
No, and I've, I've worn Bill pretty, pretty steady handedly, but we, you know, he needs to stay away from that, when we've driven some wood stakes in where the flags were, and, you know, because we were under our forty-three hundred square feet, but not by a ton, I don't want him to have to mess with any of that stuff. But yeah, no, I can, I can shorten them up, again, you know, especially this one on lot one, you know, I can bump that out to under thirty, under thirty-five feet, whatever, you know, I kind of, now that it's on here, and I've seen it this way, I kind of like leaving these squared up with the two different roads in, in the back line, and it just, or the two roads, I guess, just because again, it makes, it makes it a lot easier for everybody to go out there and get an idea of where these building areas are, trying to avoid, you know, maybe learn a thing or two about what happened on, on lot ten there, with the, you know, attempted placement of that building originally, so it's part of our solution complaint.
Any, any other questions, comments, questions?
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it. I appreciate it, uh, just leaving this right here, ready for next.
All right. All right, next on the agenda is the, uh, the fourth amendment to the ordinance, and from my reflection, basically, um, even though we have not passed the minutes, um, looking at the minutes, it seems to be in a way in which personally I feel comfortable with. Yoli, I, I'm not sure if you had a chance to see those minutes or not, but we've kind of highlighted what it's going to look like, and then crossed out the one that we want eliminated. And since we will not have another meeting before all of this has to go upstairs, this is where this kind of our last shot at...
It looks, it's shorter. Is there some language taken off, or is it just small print?
You think there's something missing?
Well, maybe not. Just nice and concise.
This is more written than what I have. To me, like, everything is from the one that I have.
Yeah, I agree.
Not that we have to take a vote with any, I think we've already done that, but, um... Any issues before we send this upstairs? I guess that's the process, right? So moving upstairs and moving on to, with the fourth segment, say?
So what happens if people respond no? Because...
Stays as it is.
And we still have two in place.
And we tried it with getting it back to one, I mean, the whole issue with this, let's say, is that, um, there's two ordinance changes that are kind of competing, and they're on record as being part of the entire ordinance, um, because of the way they were set up in a, in a town meeting that we had, or maybe it was actually an election, I guess, I'm not sure, but there were three possible votes that you could make, um, one that was defeated, two passed, but they're, they compete, so one has to go, so we have been trying to get that done, and it's been difficult, been difficult, so... This is our next shot, and this is being set up for the town meeting in June. We actually have to have everything to the selectmen by the twenty-eighth of January. And then, once this goes upstairs, then in the process, as far as I can recollect, we'll have to set up our own public hearings, which we would have to do sometime in the spring, but it'd be better early or late?
It is so many days prior to the meeting, as to be so teetering, people may...
So it'll still be kind of on the docket as we move along, but it'll be for the people to give their impression or listen to what we have to say. Anything that has to happen between this one upstairs and just hanging in there?
I guess, not only question, but there is a better way to kind of ensure that at the end of the day, one is gone.
That's how they try to do it after the last meeting.
A lot of people say why?
No, I do, so, well, I guess it goes through, if you're in favor of this proposal, then one would be gone. But if you're not in favor, that's where we're at.
Right, if you're in favor of the opposite, if you're in favor of the current A standing...
There wouldn't be an option to vote for.
No.
And as it is now, where there's a conflict, the more stringent would apply, which is B, so in reality, we're just cleaning the ordinance up to how it's being enforced now, hopefully.
I guess I'm wondering from a voter's perspective, does it give us their shot?
I think it was just confusing, right, from the beginning, as far as two ordinances that were really, really similar, and unless you picked out the four words in it that's different, that means a huge difference in how it's enforced, um, especially when you're going down voting and you're reading, it's like, didn't it just fall for them? You know, whatever.
I've been trying to read this, I'm not even seeing where the differences are.
Yeah, those four letters.
Outside of the shoreline zone and the B.
Is that right here?
The planning board put up an ordinance change, and then the selectmen put up a change. And that, that was, that's where the issue is. Actually, they put up two.
Unless you really read this closely.
Yeah, yeah.
You would not see that.
Right, absolutely. And like I said, there was a third one also that was out there, so you, you were reading right. like, trying to go through and make some sense out of whatever, and it, it didn't work very well. So do you think there is a better way?
Um, personally, I like the, they're just trying to play devil's advocate a little bit.
Well, I think, I think if, in the public hearing, from what I understand, right, if, if there was concerns about the way it was put out there, not, not, you know, what it is, but the way it was put out there, that could be changed if somebody in the, at the public hearing were to explain a better way to present it. Is that how you interpreted what was said upstairs?
I guess how I interpreted it was anything that comes out of the public hearing could be changed as we implement, which could be A stays and B goes. You know, so.
So, okay.
Great. So that opens you wide up in the public hearings.
What's that?
That opens it wide open, is if it comes out of the public hearing for changes.
Okay. So this is not necessarily a NDA from our perspective, yeah?
I think from us it is.
Yeah.
It's the cleanest, easiest, I don't hope.
So it's yes or no? Basically, it'll be a decision, yes or no?
Yeah.
All right, I don't know if it makes any sense to you, let's say this whole, this whole part, this part has been a difficult approach to go all the way, so jump it in at this point in time, so.
Any questions? On B, it says outside the shoreline zone, what, what would you do if there was a property in the shoreline zone?
That would be adding, which is being, if we can enforce anyways, and we can sit down for an hour and go over the whole thing, get your card up sometime.
Okay, all right.
But that all had crossed up in shoreline, so that was in there, but it was a competing one.
Right, I understand that, I just, I just wondered, you know, if, if B was accepted and there was a property that wanted an exception in the shoreline, what would happen?
Built to go on in the shoreline, it would save the lakes. All right, anything else? Anything, Ken, that you want to bring up for this?
I believe we're all caught for a little bit.
Okay. Yoli, what do you want? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconds? I think it's a second tonight. All right, great.